Oh, okay. All right, then we will open the Berlin School Committee meeting of March 14th and break to order the, also the public hearing for the budget for this evening. And I don't know if you want me to turn over to you, and just so you could go over the budget.
So we're going to skip, we'll take out FY '13 by discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, glad, as you know, we've submitted budgets to the Berlin FinCom and the Board of Selectmen, and we did receive a communication approximately, I'm not sure when, two or three weeks ago, from the Finance Committee requesting that the School Committee in Berlin reduce the budget that was submitted by $175,000 to be done, to be accomplished by either reducing the Berlin Elementary budget by that figure, or the Tohanto assessment by that figure, or a combination of both, of both those budgets by the $175,000 figure. So, just as a per reminder, you know, right now, we have already applied $200,000 in school choice that we have from the FY '13 budget, and as we did speak at length regarding school choice, and as the Director of Financial Services has pointed out, you know, this is not supposed to be just a piggyback that accumulates over time, but the money is supposed to be expended for the benefit of students, all Berlin students coming into the program, and also with hand programs with students coming into school choice, which is what we have done. So, we were taking a look at reducing that $175,000, the budget by $175,000. And things that we have looked at, at this particular point in time, and some scenarios for the School Committee to consider would be, we could apply another $100,000 in school choice funds that we do not believe would adversely affect the FY '14 budget, which of course is a concern for us because that'd be the next year after. And by doing, that would be, in conjunction, I think you kind of look at these as a package deal, but also taking a look at recommended school choice for this year, which for students that would be coming in next year. Just to remind the audience that school choice numbers of students we take in are not affected in that fiscal year, we take the number, we actually get the reimbursement the following year. So which is, would be FY '14, so that's why that, the tying those two financial packages together, so to speak. That'd be a $100,000 reduction at that point in time, which would leave us obviously with another $75,000 to go. Another suggestion that we have, and we don't call these recommendations, that tends to come from the Latin word, "recomandare," which means to suggest a positive course of action. So we're actually talking about, I can't help it, it's too, the, I always give the words that bother me from time to time, but, but I mean, trying to suggest things that would impact, at least upon the educational program for students here, and looking at that in concert with the building principle, would be the reduction of a grade six teaching position, which would save us approximately $53,000, because we'd have to look at various risk scenarios that would, that would accompany that. As you know, our projected totals for grade six next year would be, the lowest class we have right now, which would be 21 students. We have two sections in grade six, but we're projecting the next year with 21 students, so we would have a class of 10 and 11, which is obviously a grade six teacher, we would then have one class of 21. So that would reduce that $175,000 figure down to approximately $22,000 to be further reduced in the budget to meet the FinCom request. Last week, I mean, we did receive some, some good news, and that's why sometimes establishing budgets prematurely, like in December, something just doesn't make any sense until we get more numbers coming in. Last week, we very happy to report, actually Judy Allen did report this, and I want to thank Judy for serving on the Esteban Special Education Collaborative, the Subcommittee on Transportation, I know she served on that also, and business transportation that we have, we're running with a new company next year that has an excellent track record. Parents are very happy with the services and other school systems that they have been providing. We originally were, projected a fee increase from the current company we have that was pretty high, but we had the budget for that. But we feel though, with the recommendations we have from the new transportation company, that we are able to reduce the special education account by approximately $18,000, which, and that's just at Berlin Elementary, so we're very, very happy about, about that. If we apply that saving to the budget, then we'll have reduced the budget to within just about $4,000 of the request from, from the Finance Committee. So at this point in time, if the School Committee wanted to adopt this, to adopting these figures, and some of the information we've given you, you could, you could ask the FinCom to amend their budget reduction request by the $4,000, instead of asking for $175, ask for $171. I believe we're giving Aspen an increase of $12,005, I just, I do mention that. Other than that, we would, we could look for the budget internally at the Berlin Elementary School, and we probably would look at reducing hours for some of our tutor positions, perhaps for a reading, a remedial tutor position, or the enrichment tutor position, combination of those to achieve that figure. We also can reduce the assessment, the Tohanto, for the Berlin assessment, current, right now, it's $177,000 from Roman, these numbers let me know, if I take my memory, if I'm correct, $177. We could reduce the assessment to Tohanto by that amount of money, or obviously take any other action that you wanted to take in terms of looking at other kinds of budget, budget reductions. Your new budget vote without, without the $4,000 reduction would basically show an increase of only $23,307 from the fiscal year 12 to 13, represents about a .88 of 1% of a budget increase, so 91% increase on the budget, which is fairly small. If you were to pursue that course of action, then this evening, we will also be asking you in concert, it's kind of hard to separate these two things out because they really blend it together, but then we'd be asking you to take a look at some of the recommendations that Mr. Bradley has presented for school choice for, for next year, which you have in front of you also. I would like you to speak to those school choices because it gets a little intricate. Some of these are kind of like, for lack of a better word, package deals. We have twins, for example, parents are coming into the district, but they come, then they want the third grader to come, and so it's like, it's like all or nothing, some, a few of these, and I understand that, some of these parents that have more than one children coming in, so if they want one to come, they want one to come, and I understand that, so some of these are kind of all or nothing type of scenarios. I mean, there are other things that we could do if you're not, don't want to pursue the school choice, we certainly can look at other budget reductions that we have, but they will primarily affect student services in the classroom, so we'll take a look at other, other classroom possible reductions. Probably the next one would be grade two, where we have 22 students, we'd probably take a look at that, or other, or other personnel, but it'd probably be all personnel reductions that would affect the program. So, that's where we are with the, with the school budget, that's just to take upon that. You want to add anything?
I have a question. The numbers that you're talking about is keeping in mind that we are not adding the school choice at this point, correct?
I'm not sure. No.
We're not counting on the addition of these students?
It would, we have FY '13 budget anyhow, so no, it should apply to, I'm looking ahead.
Okay.
For your people next year, when all of a sudden you're doing this again.
Right.
Next year, and you want to stabilize your application of school choice to keep the budget stabilized, okay, that, that new revenue will be there at that point in time. Some of it is not new revenue either, some of it would be kids that are leaving as they, as they graduate, because don't forget, the following year, you're going to lose the sixth grade totally. So kids, that won't be a revenue source for you at that particular point in time. I mean, the numbers that we have, and if you, if you want to review them, once again, we're sprinkling these, these students in here, like, right now, we have 10 school choice requests for kindergarten for, for next year. But we are not recommending you accept 10 kids in kindergarten, I think that's, that's a difficult, would, that'd be problematic for the district to do that. Number one, just the sheer amount of students coming in, your classroom would then go up to 35 students with two sections, and not only that, the reimbursement rate for that is basically $2,500, not $5,000. You're only getting half of that, because the state mandate for kindergarten is only to provide kindergarten 50% of the school day, and as you know, parents may even have to send their kids to kindergarten. It's not mandated by the parents, but it is mandated by the school system to provide that service. And so in that case, we're only recommending one, but that's kind of one of the package deals that we were talking about, that Carol can certainly address for you. So it's more of FY '14 that we're looking at on what we would do in that FY '14 year with that, that revenue is missing, but it would not affect FY '13 at all.
Okay. Since this is the budget hearing, are there questions from the audience? Questions, comments? Mrs. Young?
I have a second question. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Brule, because he came to a meeting with us the other day, and that was very helpful and very informative.
My pleasure.
Thank you for doing that. I just have one question that makes me just a little bit nervous, when you said we might get to a place where we'd have to reduce that balance of $4,000 by tutors, or enrichment, or some other positions. And I always feel bad, because you have a good program, you don't want to ever see it go in any form, reduced in any way. And I know I probably touched upon this the other day, and I apologize if I don't remember your response, but can that $4,000 come out of anything from Tohanto, or any of this come from Tohanto at all?
Well, as I mentioned, you know, just to the School Committee, I mean, yes, that's another one of the options, is the $4,000 assessment, the assessment that Berlin's receiving for the operation of Tohanto next year is $177,000. As I mentioned, if the School Committee wished to, that's one of the options on the table, is they could have, ask to have that assessment come down to $171,000, which of course would also reduce the assessment for Boylston at that point in time.
That's right.
I think the public has to realize, and I know you do, because we spoke about this at the faculty meeting, but just for the, the public to understand, this is not a dollar dollar reduction that the region assessments translate into budget dollars, but it's not, here it's more simplistic, it's just dollar for dollar, and whatever you reduce in the budget is a dollar reduction. At the region, it isn't, so I mean, it gets a little bit more complicated, and if we were to, if the School Committee decided that is the way they want to pursue that, or once again, ask the FinCom that, you know, it's $171,000, okay, I mean, that's obviously another option, that we would have to go back and, and basically Courtney would be sitting down and just calculating out, okay, what does $171, an assessment for Berlin, then what is $171 reduction, well, not $171, $171 to Berlin reduction, and then how is that going to translate into the Boylston assessment, which obviously will be lower too, you know, proportionally, but then the big question is how that then, how does that translate into dollars, actual dollars, the budget at the region? And then they will have to take that up the following week, with the other, I think with the Regional Committee to talk about the proposed budget reduction at that level.
And, I mean, I'm just estimating that if we're taking $4,000 away from Berlin, we're approximate, approximately taking away about $8,000 from Boylston's assessment, which goes, which adds to $12,000, which...
The ratio is .404 for Berlin and .596 for Boylston.
Yeah.
That's a ratio relationship.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you have to keep playing with the numbers, you know?
Right.
But because there's other factors too, that change those numbers, it isn't just a ratio, but it's mostly the ratio though.
And as I said before, other things can happen. I mean, this is still March, we have just a governor's budget, I mean, other things still have to go into play. I mean, as I said to the faculty, this is like dancing with three people at once.
There's a picture.
Trying to dance with three people at once is very difficult, because it's an interplay among all of these budgets. If the regional transportation reimbursement, which is budgeted at 37%, historically has come to a 50 comes up, we may see a $12,000 savings at that particular level, but it may not, but we have to, at some point in time, you have to work with the numbers that you have in front of you, there may be more reimbursement to cities and towns coming out. I know the revenue collections at the state are surprisingly up, which I think is a surprise to them. I don't know if the MBTA will eat it up, but I have, I mean, this pressure's coming from all, all over the place, you know, for available dollars, but will there be additional revenue that, that is coming in, even additional revenue over the summer? I don't know, but, you know, we have to, at some point in time, factor out a budget somewhere. As I said to the School Committee, they always have the ability to reduce the budget, okay? I mean, legally, they have also had the ability to increase the budget too, but that gets to be somewhat problematic, I mean, politically and diplomatic, because then people start building their budgets around this budget, because basically this budget's the biggest budget in any town, not just in Berlin, but any town in the educational budget, so it gets to be more problematic, so you can always go down, but a little difficult to go up.
Bill, you have a question?
Yeah. So, when we do school choice, students come in to BMS, and then they go up to Tohanto. Are they counted in our assessment proportion in Tohanto as being from Berlin, or how does that work out?
No, Tohanto is a separate legal entity unto itself, so any students that are attending Tohanto that are school choice, that revenue goes to Tohanto.
And that it would be proportionally?
Because it's a separate legal entity unto itself. So that money, Boylston, school choice students, and Berlin school choice students, when they go to Tohanto, become Tohanto school choice students.
Okay.
And that's a common, common pot of money, shall we say, that goes into the reimbursement to that legal entity, which is Tohanto Regional High School.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Questions, any other questions? Go ahead.
I have just one more thing, and I think they're probably tied together, Dr. Brule, but like, if you, you just said a minute ago, a couple minutes ago, you, another scenario would be one second grade, that's a possibility, you don't really want to see it happen, but that could be a possibility.
Well, the, that's in terms of, we do not wish to apply
The $100,000.
Another $100,000 school choice funds, then, and, I mean, this is all premised on the fact that we want to reduce the budget $175,000 to comply with the FinCom's request, okay, and I mean, that's, it's kind of like an eight rail track to this whole discussion, okay? I'm just, so I'm giving that as a, as a fact, so to speak, right now, that we want to do that, or we want to comply as much as we can with that request. So if you want to do that, and if the Committee does not want to pursue reducing another $100,000 school choice, and let's say wants to do 50, okay, then if we want to comply with that request, then we have to go find another 50, somewhere, okay, either internally within the Berlin Elementary budget, okay, or once again, a contribution between the Tohanto budget and the Berlin budget, but we're going to have to go find that someplace else. So when you're dealing with those, those numbers, okay, at that particular point in time to make up those numbers, I mean, you're going to be talking personnel, I mean, if anyone else has another idea, I am, all is, in terms of, of accomplishing that, that fee.
I...
We know what the contracts there settles, the contracts Tohanto settles, those are fixed.
But then, School Committee, I mean, not School Committee, school choice would have to be based on whether you, whether you accept those school choice slots, whether there's one class or two classes, right?
No, 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 not for the FY '13 budget, we have that, okay? What I'm, I'm trying to be futuristic in thinking here about not just this year, but I'm looking at FY '14, because we're going to be back in a situation, back in FY '14.
No, I asked for...
I'm also looking at the sixth grades not being here, and FY '14, okay, and that loss of revenue at that point in time. And in the loss of this school choice that we're applying for this year, and just continuing on, what is that scenario going to look like? Because we are trying to, I mean, we're not piggy, piggybacking on our funding, or we're trying to have some contingency in that funding that we can fall back on, okay, should something happen, you know, here, not here, but at, at the school, so it's just future planning for our safety net for the program and that, that role.
Thank you. Okay. Yep. One of the other things I was going to ask tonight was what the balance has been for the school choice fund last year, this year, what you project it to be for next year?
Yeah, FY 11, actually, I got it from 2009 on, but, and I'll give you the numbers of school choice students that we have, you also kind of found that's been increasing too, but in FY 09, we had 11 on school choice students, and the ending, now I'll give you the ending fund balance, it was just over 211,000, 211, 021. In FY 10, you had 10.5 FTEs, ending balance was 265, 541. FY 11, and these are all actuals so far, FY 11, you had 12 FTEs, ending balance was 337, 684. Oh, now I should have brought, I'm sorry, please hand me that, I apologize, I should have given these to you before. And in FY 12, the projection is 20.5 FTEs, you see a marked increase from FY 11 to FY 12, went from 12 FTEs to 20.5, and my projection for the ending balance is 342, 801. Okay? Now, with regard to FY '13, the year that we're, we're speaking of, our projected ending balance is 268, 93. That's with the current, you know, your previously voted budget of 200,000, already removed, as you can see in the middle of the page, and if we removed another 100,000, we would have the bottom line number, meaning we would still have a 50,000 contingency, would be 168, 93, or 210, 893, including the 50,000.
Wait a minute, okay, I lost you here. 210, 893. Okay.
It would be 210, yeah, so, yeah, I did not update, you know, 14, because I didn't know what, certainly what you would be doing, so.
Okay.
That gives you somewhat of an idea.
So a roundabout of, because I'm not sure how you figure this, in this spreadsheet, so if we took another 100,000 from FY '13, what, what do you think FY '14, our bottom line would be?
It's far, well, it depends on what you do this evening. Now, if you want, I can calculate based on the recommendations that, that, you know...
Yeah, I was just thinking, less than 100,000.
Because certainly, like you said, we did, we'll get into that too, but if we did do that, what would we have? So, now taking out the 200,000?
See that? She shook it.
She gave you a hand, too.
Again, for FY 11.
I didn't happen yet this year.
But as you see on the spreadsheet though, I had originally, because again, it's just a projection for 14, I put in 200,000. Now, I don't know, we can just leave that, that level, but, you know.
Well, that's what I'm, that's my question is basically, is if we started applying a certain amount to the budget, is it going to have to continue that way, and are we going to be out of school choice money at some point?
Now, for the fund balance ending without the contingency, forgetting, not the bottom line, including an additional assumed 65,000 in revenue, well, 13?
Yeah.
Was it, was that including the kindergarten too, though?
Yeah, I just...
Okay, so a little bit less, that's okay, it's only $2,500 difference there, but it would be 195, 893, and then keeping the $50,000 contingency, you would then, bottom line would be 145, 893. And again, that's including the 65,000 additional expected revenue, if you did vote the recommendations for school choice going forward, and also assuming that already we would be utilizing 200,000 in FY '14 budget. So that's with that already taken out, just to be clear.
Because the, applied to the budget line has slowly gone up.
But again, to reiterate the point, I was actually speaking to the DOR today regarding E and D certification, and again, school choice came up, and he reiterated again, you know, it is not to be building up money, you know, and, and one gauge is, you know, having to do with receipts that you bring in, that, you know, if you went for you on that, that's the, the recommendation, I don't want to say, but kind of the, the guidance, I guess, that he did give, because DES, he didn't really give any particular guidance when I spoke to you earlier about it, but today, he did say, I can see if you kept, you know, sort of close to what you received and received to you before, but any more than that, they are looking to see that you are spending that money, because that is what it's meant for.
Right.
So, you know, and we would still have more than that amount, even, even at the very end, even using 200,000, we still have more than what we are expecting to bring in from the fall, from the previous year.
Not with using 300, though, but with using 200?
Oh, no, no, with using 300.
Oh, okay.
With using 300 in FY 12, yes, yes, yeah, because again, I'm also promulgating this on the additional 65,000 in revenue, if you voted the recommendations.
Okay.
The other thing in FY '14 is of course you, you will be losing, you know, two salaries, well, two or one, depends on what we vote tonight, you'll be losing those salaries because of...
You'll be losing one tonight.
Yes, you'll be losing another one.
Another one for the following year.
Plus, perhaps a reduction in your specialties, which won't be a lot of money, but coupled with that.
It feels like it's just a careful balancing it though.
It is, and that's what I was hoping to hear, was that it's planned.
Right, well, that's what, I don't want to get to the point where, I hope we tip the scales too much.
Yeah, that can come too quickly.
Yes.
So...
I mean, we have to have another discussion on this too, I think, with, gives some input from, from Carol too, that on a reduction in the sixth grade, we'd have to take a look at the composition of that, to see if any additional support would, would not have to be provided at that, at that grade level, you know? But that would not be a huge, huge amount of money, if that's even necessary.
Any more questions or thoughts, comments?
I, one thing that seems easier to me regarding of the $4,000, I would feel very comfortable saying, can we, you know, would the Finance Committee give us that?
Mr. Thomasine is here.
He's hiding now. Could we have $4,000, please? But I would feel comfortable with that, because it's such a small increase to the budget, and every year we have, you know, in any business, you have huge increases, and I think that's such a small increase, and, and, you know, I know it's $4,000, but in the scheme of things at the town like budget, I would be very comfortable asking for that.
I agree.
Even then, like, the increase to the entire budget, I mean, considering it's the biggest budget in town, and nothing else is even, is even close to this, what, .88%?
With the most employees out of the budget, right.
It's almost all funded.
And employee costs are the biggest cost in the budget, and if this is the biggest, we have the most amount of employees probably ever in the school, of all the town budgets, so.
Right.
Such a small increase, I think I would be very comfortable with that, I don't know how I, if you feel about it.
No, I agree.
Is the rest of your committee coming, or?
Scott is here, he'll be viewing one details about 7:30.
Okay. I don't know, I mean, do you want to make a decision on this right now, or do you want to speak with Finance Committee beforehand, or?
If there, a couple of different ways to handle this procedurally, I mean, if there are no other questions from the audience regarding a public, on a public hearing, you do not have to vote a budget at a public hearing, it's just, it's just to have input from the public to talk about the budget, so you can close out the budget hearing, you can go back to your agenda, continue to work through your agenda, and then when the chairman of the FinCom comes, or the members of the FinCom, you can then resume your FY '13 budget discussion. That's just a suggestion.
Okay. Why don't we do that? But I want to make sure that while the budget hearing... open, there are no more questions. Okay, and yourselves, okay. All right, then I need a motion to close the budget hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are still working on the payroll and warrants. We have a consent agenda that is only the February eighth open session minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
And was there any comments, questions, changes, typos? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Communications, Ruth just brought to light that we did get a package from Bodich and Dewey, which she is going to take a look at about the Reed Tyler scholarship, and, I don't know, you can update us on that at the next meeting if need be, okay? And the applications are out, I believe, for students that are in college and graduating from high school, and the deadline, I will remind people, is the last Friday in April, correct? Okay. Petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Do we have a CPAC report? Okay, superintendent's report.
Okay, superintendent search update, just for the public, we had our final interviews yesterday evening at the Hunterford High School, we had some final candidates interviewed. Afterwards, there was considerable discussion deliberation regarding all the candidates. We sent out the writing samples to people to see what the final two candidates, there was a, a input from our community search, people were, was asked for, and input was given by community members on their opinions regarding the candidates that were advanced that evening, so at this point in time, it was resolved that night, that the committee right now is focusing based on two candidates, and we're in the process of setting up onsite visits for them with a possible, possible appointment at the next regional school committee meeting on last twenty-second?
Yep.
Last twenty-second. So, we're on, we're on schedule, actually a little ahead of schedule, on time, and as you know, the amount of superintendent vacancies in the state right now, I think it's up to fifty, and extreme competition for candidates, so my compliments to the school committee for staying on schedule, staying on task, keep moving forward on this. As you know, it's just supply and demand, it's just a huge demand and supply for qualified candidates are very, very few, so we're moving ahead on that, and it's, we're on schedule.
I want to add, too, that we had some very fine candidates, and thank them for applying, including Judy, thank you. And, you know, we've, it's time consuming, but I think the committee's doing a good job.
I think it's the most important decision a school committee can make.
As the chair.
It's challenging.
So.
Yes.
Great deal.
We've been a wealth of knowledge and expertise that, you know, that really has made the process much better, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, just trying to put myself out of a job.
Who would want that?
I meant that positively, by the way. Very enjoyable working everyone, everyone this year, but it is this most important decision a school committee can make, no question about it, I think it's a...
No pressure.
Well, hey, you know, you do the best you can with all the information you have at that particular point in time, as you do in life with anything, so, that's all there is to it. MAS Day in the Hill, I just gave you the agenda for that, if you are interested in attending the MAS Day in the Hill on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and two, please let us know, let Cheryl and I know, we'll certainly make appropriate reservations for any committee members that wish to attend. I gave you a school attending children's report, I think that's generally been requested by the school committee every year, this is of January first, two thousand and twelve, talks about all the school attending children that are currently in the Berlin and Boylston schools, including our vocational numbers from both Berlin and Boylston, students that are chatted school students, students that are going to private schools, as well as home schooled students, broken out by both Berlin and Boylston and by grade level. I think this is something you typically have to have.
At least it's sort of proportional, though.
That's true, because it belongs to this.
Yeah.
And most of the students, you can see that do the district, most of them, all of them are basically starting right around grade eight, nine, or a hundred, or something in that area.
Except for the private, which just is amazing, how many kids go to private schools. Hundred and forty-eight kids between the two, between the two towns.
Right.
Starting right in kindergarten.
A lot of the students I know at the high school of private, a lot of them, they grew from Boylston, a lot of legacy students, you know, parents have gone to St. John's, their grandparents have gone to St. John's, or any school you want to pick, so they continue to do those programs. Well, Hope and Phil obviously have much greater retention rate when the middle high school is constructed, and we revamp a lot of our programs, they have to give them a new school program, which is really taking off.
Do you want to continue with the, there isn't any, I mean, we, no action on this particular item?
No, this is strictly informational, only, that's something the committee has traditionally asked for, and providing, you know, to...
Do you want to continue with the facility update, or do you want to perhaps bring the, bring Scott up to speed?
Is everyone coming from Pinton?
Is everyone coming, or do you want to, go ahead?
Yeah, I think, I've got one question, though.
Sure.
You mentioned there were fifty openings for superintendents statewide, is that normal?
It's been increasing steadily every year, I think last year it was sixty-five, and that's fifty now, that's not counting how many more will, will open up with people leaving the position. It's, it's been steadily increasing, I'd say, in the last, the last ten years, and I would anticipate it will continue to increase at that level. I went to a meeting last week, and I don't want to digress too much, but just to answer your question, I went to a meeting last week of Central Massachusetts Superintendent's Association, and I was president of that, you know, four or five years ago, and I walked into the room, and this is only three years that I've been gone, and I clearly did not recognize forty percent of the people in the room, and around my table, with ten people around the table, two of us were interim superintendents, one being Joe Conley, who's in Harvard, who was here before, so Joe, Joe and I, there were three other superintendents that were retiring, two that were probably not going to have their contracts renewed, my math is probably fuzzy, now I don't know where I am, but another two or three that were stable in their, in their positions, so, I think the pressure on the, it's a lot of pressure, too, on the position, particularly one during the great recession, you know, in terms of working with multifaceted problems, you know, and trying to maintain quality program, and try and gain in competition. I think the people in the private sector, and the public sector doesn't understand the amount of pressure there is. We are in competition with school choice, people who are in school choice, we're in competition with charter schools, we're in competition with private schools, and the unfunded mandates just keep rolling in, I mean, one, we've got another one, two more this week, just came in, I don't know if they're, or they're going to fund it, and they fund it for three years, and they walk away, you know, because they use those three little dirty words, subject to appropriation, yeah, I hope you weren't thinking of that, but, yeah, subject to appropriation, so, that's how, that's how the state works out. It comes back, it bull ranks back to us, and municipal government, I'm sure, has their, their things that come to them, there are new funded mandates, unfunded mandates from, from the state on things that they have to do, that might have to do with health issues, or plowing issues, or salt, sand, it could be anything, they have to do, too, so, that's what's happening.
Scary.
It is.
It is.
Do you, would you like us to bring you up to speed on?
Yeah, you can bring us, I mean, we have two more members that'll be coming, our meeting is starting at seven thirty, but if you have any handles or anything you want to just get started with.
Right over there, if you want to review, well, we have more people coming.
Yeah. Why don't you go ahead and give us our facility update?
Okay, facility updates, as you know, we've had so much fun with the pump alarm system at the elementary school. The chief thing here is it, it keeps triggering off alarms to the fire and police department, and I'm sure Carol could speak to that a little bit more, but they've been wonderful.
They have a bad cheaper card, and the, and the guys in the fire department have been so gracious, and, you know, the people just keep coming, and they do all hours of the day and night, it's crazy, but I'm starting to take bets on when they're, when it's going to go off next, trying to anticipate, but, but they're just patient, they know that we're, we're working on getting it taken care of, so it's a matter of getting a part that had to be made specifically for that particular pump.
But it's actually going to be worked on beginning tomorrow, and be, should be done by Friday.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so finally got that all figured out.
We're going as fast as we can, I mean, but once again, as Carol said, the part had to be made, you know, for that system, but, no, Berlin Fire and Police have been very magnanimous, not too crumpy, so, they've come down, so, we appreciate their, we appreciate them having patience with us, but we did move on this as fast as we possibly could. The other thing is the intercom clock system here at, at Berlin, I was going to actually ask you to vote on something on business items tonight, we weren't sure we'd get that bid in on time, but we, we won't, I'll let Courtney talk about that a little bit, but as you know, the intercom system here is somewhat defunct. We have the clocks usually are on time, some of them are battery operated, some of them running off the internal clock mechanism, from my understanding, and from Carol's understanding, we did have a watch with this, and I think the, the central brains of the whole system, basically, what came out of the old Berlin Memorial School, so, that's going to be fourteen, fifteen years old, it's even got some tubes in it back there, so, it gets hot, I don't know if you know, hot dogs, but it's, it's, it's really old, and so, we did have one vendor come through, and went through the entire system with us, and Courtney, I'll let you update us from there while you're done.
Yeah, so I did, we did receive that quote, and I really wasn't too pleased with the quote, it had very, very little information for the almost twenty thousand dollars that they had quote, so I did try to seek more information, but we also, I also thought to call the, our OPM for the new building project, because certainly they'll be putting in a new intercom system, and the person, and I got the information for the person in charge of that area, and so I got that contact name, so that we could get some good other vendors to see quotes from, so it should be within, by your next meeting, we should have that all, all wrapped up and everything, to make sure, because you want to do due diligence to what you're receiving, and make sure there's good detail there behind the quotes and everything, too, so you know exactly what we're getting, and how it's going to function and all of that, so.
I think you did get a quote, but it was quite a while ago, correct?
Well, it was like a...
No, before that.
A long time ago.
From Riley Systems.
Oh.
And then they sold that, or they took that part of it off.
Okay.
Well, we wanted to make select, and Judy, she was very happy, but because of this was a capital planning article, it's been there for a number of years.
Yes.
So, so we, we have moved on it, you know, we moved on it very quickly, and we'll have it taken, taken care of, and we hope to get the work done, maybe during April vacation, when the kids are out of here.
Okay, so there won't be any need for a vote this evening?
No, we haven't, we don't have a good to be a vote on, so, but I'm sure by next meeting, we'll have something for it.
Okay.
And we're just going to talk about the capital article for oil repair, but we can take that, because that'll be a business item later on.
Okay.
That's something we have reserved, the local capital planning committee has for reservation for that, as a warrant article, so, we'll chat about it, we'll get that through.
Courtney, do you have any report to give us this evening?
No, no formal report this evening, but everything's looking fine with budget.
Okay, and you mentioned to me that, perhaps next month, we will look at the management letter from, that the town of Berlin had a portion of the school mentioned, and we can talk about that at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. All right, principals report, Carol?
I wanted to start by thanking Angela Yildiz and the Buss Organization for inviting me last week to speak on PBIS, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support, which is a program that we selected to do based on state mandate, to have a social curriculum in place at each, at each school, and I brought with me Martha Wally, who is the district or regional trainer for PBIS, and she did a wonderful PowerPoint presentation, and really, I think, reached out to the parents, we had quite a few folks in attendance, we had probably over thirty people there, which is really good for an evening event like that, and I, I think that this is a very positive step for us, as far as we're working with children in behavioral intervention approaches that are in a very positive light, that connect to the strengths of children, as opposed to weaknesses or struggles that they have, and I think that she was very clear on explaining that program to the parents, so, I got very positive feedback, I, afterward Martha kind of said to me, how do you think it went, and we weren't quite sure, we couldn't get a sense, but really, it was, the folks were really reflecting on, on the program, and also how they were applying it to their own families, how they were applying it at home, and how they could use that approach, because it's a very systematic approach to working with children, and, and we were very pleased, so thank you to Buss for inviting us that evening, and thank you to the school committee, too, who came out, because we're there, and gave us the support, too.
Same room?
Yeah, same room. So, the other piece I wanted to mention, we've been at a number of conferences that have been scheduled, seem to be scheduled right around now, I did want to mention that last week Judy and I, and Paul Goodhein, and the union representatives from our school, Patty Romer and Mary Whalen, attended the educator evaluation training session with Carla Baird, and we got a great deal of information to, to start working on for the educator evaluations, which we're going to be starting to train next week, next year, next week, next year, and so that was very valuable, for all of us to go together, we had a lot of rich discussion around that process. So, and then this week, Judy and Paul and I just attended a conference up in Lemonstir that was desponsored, and that was, that was intervention, tiered intervention strategies, and we had some talk amongst ourselves, too, about where we were going to the two schools, and how we wanted to align the work that we needed to do together, so we're still committed to doing that. And so, I was at another conference, the Robert Rosano on Effective Teaching, so, I'll be in the rest of the week, but it's important, I get a lot of information that I take back and need to use, so we live with the staff, so it's very good to have that opportunity to go, it's, it's important. Other upcoming events, Literacy Night is tomorrow evening from six fifteen to eight, so please come, bring your children, night under the stars, and that should be, it's always a fun event, Literacy Night. We have, second trimester report cards are out on Friday, so, for those, children's backpacks, and we also have MCAS starting up next week, with our composition beginning on Tuesday, and Dare Graduation is April fifth, and we planned it, that's Thursday, April fifth, and we planned it that evening, because it coincides with the National Dare, Dare Ed, so.
You got a heck of a public speaker coming in, too.
Yeah, it's a mystery speaker.
Oh, yeah?
Or me, I thought you meant me.
Absolutely.
That's it, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Judy?
So, as you recall, last year, we had our Department of Elementary and Secondary coordinated program review, and they evaluated us across three areas, special ed, civil rights, and services for English language learners, well, we just received the English language learner report. Well, we've just received the English language learner report and results. And I'm very proud of the work that, that's been done across all three districts in meeting these of our second language learners. We, we really had no program six years ago. And when we were last evaluating in two thousand and five, we had, they looked at eighteen criteria, which they did for this program review. And at the time in, in oh five, we had five of those eighteen that we would consider to have implemented. We had ten areas that were partially implemented and three not implemented at all, across all three districts. This time they evaluated each district separately. And Berlin was found to have implemented fifteen of the eighteen. And three areas were only, were partially implemented and those were three areas, two of those areas that we absolutely knew about. One of which has to do with, it's a two-pronged approach to working with second language learners. One, we pull out the students and they're working with an ESL certified teacher. We're golden. We have a very talented person who has worked with our ESL students, Lingus Sylah. The other piece of it is that our, our classroom teachers have been participating in particular teaching, teacher training to work with ESL students. But we haven't been participating at a rate and at a level that allows us to pass this particular criteria. We're supposed to have at least one teacher at a grade level who's gone through all four category trainings and we're not quite there. So we're still working on that. We knew that that was going to be an area that we were, we were not up to snuff on. And, and they're now changing the training requirements. So it's really hard to sustain the, the training when you know it's going to be, it's going to be changed as well. So when I have to write a corrective action plan, that's going to be a little challenging. The other, and so two of those criteria will lead to the training, the professional development. And then the third is interesting, they, you heard me talk about this before, under the special ed findings in that we provide translations for parents of, of the documents that go home. We provide oral interpreters for parents. We don't document the fact that we have provided those. And so there's no documentation in the record that says we provided the oral translation. And so we have corrected it. And we just need to make sure that when they come in six years, we have that documentation in the record. I'm not minimizing the importance of making sure we're compliant, not at all. But when you compare to where we were, I, the folks at the school are to be applauded for their, for their efforts and their energies and their sensitivity that have allowed us to be very successful with our second language learners.
And I, I, once again, I have to applaud Judy's efforts in this area because she's really, you know, taking care of this because it really is a specialty area. A lot of the mandates for this come from the federal government, obviously to the state. And, and the federal government finds the state in many cases lacking, particularly in many of the larger, you know, urban centers, you know, Worcester, Cambridge, places like that where, you know, you go to Cambridge, you have forty-three different languages being spoken. And Worcester, you know, with a lot of immigrant population, which is people speaking another language, language besides English is their first language. So a lot of these come down through the federal government to the state. And when they pass these laws and regulations, small communities like Berlin, Boston also have to implement them the same way, even though we obviously don't have a, a, a lot of, of students that, that need the service, but we have to have it in place just in case we do. So we, we still, so there are a lot, some of these citations and people, public may say, well, why is this matter here? It's just because it's the law.
Right.
And we have to implement it. I don't believe there's any additional funding for that either, is there?
No.
Sorry, get my water on that one again.
Yeah. Thanks Judy. One more item maybe? Okay. The two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year calendar.
We've worked together in concert with the, all the administrators and obviously with the Boylston and then next week with the Honto Committee to try and put together a calendar, I think, you know, once and for all, that with the idea of having some of our professional development be as, development be as unified as possible among all three school districts. And a lot of this is done, we're trying to do mainly because, well, big impetus for this is the new teacher evaluation system. So we are not a race to the top school system, thank God, because they're required to have this in place this coming year, but we will have to have this in place in, in the thirteen, fourteen school year. A lot of work with this system. It's a total revamp of, of how we conduct teacher evaluations and administrative evaluations and superintendent evaluations, all three. And the game plan is that it is after a, this will be phased in, some parts of the evaluation will be phased in such as input from parents, input from the community, input from students, okay, at the high school. This will be a phase in period for a lot of parts of the teacher evaluation, but a ma, a major part of it will, we have to have in place by thirteen, fourteen. And that has to do with the development of, of rubrics. It has the development to do with SMART goals, okay, would have to be developed by teachers and, and administration. So we need to have this common planning time between the, the three, the three districts. Another reason too is also we're trying to plan this around the Aspid Valley Collaborative Region members offering, they're, they're planning in their calendars to also offer a, a common date for that to be accomplished too. And that will allow us to have in services for a lot of our low incidence teachers, for example, school psychologists, school nurses, speech therapists, which traditionally, you know, we have, you know, three, it's hard to do quality in service when you have three people, but you know, if you have, you know, forty-five or fifty among a number of school systems, then you can start to do some really quality in service on that. So that's what the, how the calendar is, is designed this year. We did, we did put down on the calendar, something a little bit different, is in the past we used to have the little snowmen on the calendar. I don't know why we did, but, I mean, basically you target the last day of school, it's your hundred eighty of day, and then from there, if you have to add on school days, you add them on as you go along. So that is the target day that we have for next year, which should be June seven, seventeen, being the last day of school. So once again, we're starting historically before Labor Day, which I think is a, is a very wise thing to do in case you have, this winter, for example, we, we lost those first three, three days right off the bat. And if we would have had a, quote, normal winter, who knows when we could be going to school? So if you start after, after Labor Day, I mean, then you're really up against it. Now you're going to be talking about canceling April vacation, February vacation and all the angst that that produces. And so, so we're going to stay with, my suggestion would be to stay with historically with starting before the Labor Day calendar. But that's the rationale for why it is constructed the way, the way that it is constructed.
I think your little comment at the very bottom, the asterisk, I think that takes the place of the little snowman.
Okay. We, no, we always get questions from people at the beginning of the school year.
Yes.
Why do you have those snowmen?
The small.
So what's the last day of school? And we launch into a, why don't you just have the last day of school be the last day of school? If you add on, you can form the public adding on. That makes sense to me.
Okay. Is there any questions?
I know we went from half day for the day before Thanksgiving to a full day of.
Mm-hmm.
Any feedback from that, from the teachers or?
I did not receive any. Not from this group.
Okay.
We received it from other groups.
Oh, okay.
Did you?
Yes, I did.
Is it going to affect the vote at another?
No.
Meeting? Okay.
No.
All right. Still have the usual February and April vacations.
Traditional ones, yep. Nothing different for Christmas or, I mean, whenever the holidays fall, I mean, those are all very traditional holidays. We have not changed those whatsoever.
See, December, yep. Okay. No questions or comments? Do I hear a motion to approve? So moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
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 You know, if anything, a biblical significance should happen in terms of catastrophe, we can always adjust the calendar.
Hurricanes, ice storms, earthquakes, okay. So let's go back to our discussion of the FY thirteen budget. And I don't know whether you want an overview once again?
Well.
Or do you have information that?
Handout for you and to give you information of where we stand.
Okay.
This has been changing so much and even now it's already on a page, but promised to send what everybody's requested. And this is basically just showing the request list and showing how much effort everybody has to request, how, how over budget we are.
Thank you.
So really the thing is the highlight is on the front page there. If you go down in the middle with the requested budget FY two thousand thirteen, you have the total budget and you see the budget increase. And right now the budget increase is five hundred and thirty-nine thousand from the requests. It's a little deceiving there because that includes the additional debt exclusion from the Tonto capital assessment, which we already had a debt exclusion for that. You subtract that out, overall the budget increase is just a percentage over five hundred thousand. You see that the excess, you're nowhere over budget by nearly two hundred thousand, it's a hundred ninety-seven thousand number. So now when we look at the BMS and Tonto or the Tonto assessment, combined those numbers are three hundred and fifty-three thousand approximately there. So I mean, right there, you're already fifty-three thousand, if you took every penny, okay, so nothing, of course, we know you can't do that at the town. I mean, the town's same things got fuel, oil increases are just like ones in your budget. Police, no, fuel increases are just like ones in your budget. And then we've got things that we've been lucky right now, the, we're looking at chapter three, two, B, basically the health insurance, and the request that's only three thousand higher than previous fiscal year. So that's a positive, but it still adds three thousand that's, and we have to account for. And then you start going through all these, you know, ones that are kind of, how do we really cut those back? And you quickly start adding up to over a hundred thousand that we need, definitely has to be cut. So we're looking at, when we came with a hundred and seventy-five K request, we're not going to come back unless something drastically happens. We're not going to come back and asking you, can you cut that? We're going to ask you for cutting more. I mean, that is really the high end. How much lower that can be? We have had some positive news since our new growth, looks like it's going to be twenty-five thousand higher, but twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand. So the budget you have there, new growth, upper left-hand corner, it still says twenty-five K. So we got some positive news there. But I mean, we do have, you know, other pushbacks on other departments, but you know, you obviously are the big department. I mean, even if you took a hundred and seventy-five K hit, your increase would still represent sixty percent of the new funds that were available. That, and part of that was also subtracting, you have the Worcester County Retirement Assessment we had that increased and things were taken from that. But all that, just over three hundred thousand, I mean, if you did take out a hundred and seventy-five K, you're still looking at between BMS, Tonto gaining a hundred and seventy-eight K, which is like, said about sixty percent of that overall number. So that's where we came up with, you know, pushing back to get a hundred and seventy-five K, any combination you're, you want to do. I know it's hard as you at Tonto because, you know, a hundred and seventy-five K cut from Berlin is not just a hundred and seventy-five K cut from Tonto, Boylston's assessment goes down. So, but this is the numbers that we're working from, so you can see whatever other departments have requested and where we're at. So just to give you an idea of where, you know, what we've been looking at.
Do you want to fill?
What do you like me to do?
Yeah. I don't know, you didn't call them recommendations, you called them.
Suggestions.
Suggestions to the committee.
Okay.
And you could fill the.
Just to the chair, quick question. Have you explored, on health insurance, have you done any workups on GIC yet? Have you, have you explored that, going down that road?
One of the biggest concerns we have with GIC is that we go there, right now the town's not offering retiree healthcare.
Right, yeah.
So if you go GIC.
I heard about it a lot.
You have to offer that. All of a sudden you run into this, I mean, for other, many towns do offer that, so it could be advantageous for us. We don't offer that, so that's, so that's a big unknown about what extra liability we would incur by going down that path. And the fact that many, the first towns that are getting really, you know, hammered the most are the ones that have offered that retiree healthcare is kind of an indication that we've taken the, you know, we're in the better position where we're at not having offered that and, you know, where we are with Maya. I mean, we moved into Maya around like fiscal year two thousand and seven or something like that, and we got significant savings from that. And this year our overall increase was like four point five-two percent. So it came, I mean, last year we got hammered at, I think, at the thirteen percent number. We were in the high end. So it was a good number to see. So that's where, I mean, extent of where we looked at was GIC.
Okay, it's just a question I get asked, so I thought I'd ask you tonight. I mean, at our health insurance region, we, we got zero this year for any increase. So we're pretty happy about that.
Yeah.
And that was not going to be a GI, GIC.
Glad to hear that too.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'll repeat that, okay? From where we were before? Okay.
Quick overview of the suggestions that Dr. DeBrul has suggested.
Well, we took your, your, once again, just communicate to me through, I mean, you obviously you sent it to me, but through the chair about looking at the hundred and seventy-five thousand reduction and how could we look at some scenarios to possibly achieve that, that reduction between the Berlin Elementary and the, and the Boylston, I'm sorry, the Honto Regional High School budget. I did say Boylston, it wasn't a Freudian slip, I probably did, didn't mean it because as I explained to the committee before, I mean, it's really dancing with three people. I mean, because real, because it all blends in together as what we do for Berlin here, what we do at the region affects the assessment, which affects Boylston, which affects Boylston Elementary, and it's just, it's, it's an interesting way to do business when you're starting to do budgets because some of this stuff is not dollar for dollar. So it gets, it gets complicated. But what we, what we did look up and what we did discuss before we were here, we had our, our public, our public hearing, is that we were looking to apply, we've already applied two hundred thousand dollars to school choice into the FY thirteen budget. And we're looking at the possibility of applying another hundred thousand dollars to school choice funds without adversely affecting the FY fourteen budget. You might say, well, what's that going to do with the price of peanuts on thirteen or fourteen? Because I'm, I'm thinking ahead for the committee on where they're going to be in FY fourteen. And this also gets complicated because it also ties into school choice. And as, as you know, historically in, in Berlin, we have tried, and actually throughout, throughout Berlin, Boylston and in the region, we've tried to sprinkle kids in to school choice where it makes sense to put them in there. But it's not going to cost residents more taxpayers to educate more kids. So for example, if we have openings in a particular class and we're going to have a class that's going to be, you know, thirty kids, let's say two sections of thirty kids, I mean, we're going to continue to run that. We're not going to just collapse that into one section and have thirty kids in the classroom. We're going to run two sections of fifteen. But we will sprinkle in maybe two kids in, in both those sections that have classes of seventeen and therefore generate additional money in school choice, approximately about twenty thousand dollars in school choice. So that's the philosophy that, that the, that the committee has adopted in the past historically from what I've seen and also what we're looking to do for FY fourteen. And we're going to have a conversation about that. But once again, these things are all predicated one on another. Because I am concerned about FY fourteen, okay? Where, because we're going to be back in this, I assume we're going to be back in the same position. I may not be back in it, but you're definitely going to be back in FY, in FY fourteen. And I'm trying to think about just being able to sustain the budget. So all of a sudden it doesn't wind up being, you know, going back to the town for like an override or anything of that type of nature. So this all inter, all interrelates together and it gets to be somewhat complicated. That being said, we, we took a look at applying another hundred thousand dollars to school choice and I, I ran through those scenarios as well as Courtney Keegan here also helped us run through those scenarios to where we would be going through the effort school choice and how sustainable that is. But we'd be looking at reducing, that's a possible scenario of a hundred thousand in school choice. One other thing we were looking at, which we really don't want to do, but, you know, if we have to start looking at that one seventy-five figure, we'd be looking to reduce a grade six teaching position. And that would probably net us about round, roundabout figures. And that would probably net us about, round, roundabout figures, approximately about $53,000. So, that, that combined would bring us up to about 153,000. So, we'd have another $22,000 to go. We did receive a bid award that was voted last week thanks to the yeoman efforts of Judy Ballencourt, PPS director. We want the new company to provide special, special needs transportation. And we think we'll have a savings there of 18,000 in transportation costs, which we're just ecstatic about because we just, that usually goes up every year, no matter what. So, we're happy about that and we feel as though we have a good company that will provide quality service to students and their parents in, in all three of the school systems. So, by applying that to the budget, then we're right around about four grand to your, your 175 request. We're right about 171, round figures, you know? But right around 171 if the school committee wishes to do that. I mean, that's, they've asked me to give them some options, some scenarios to work on your target figure of 175. These are some of the scenarios that we were chatting with before at the open hearing and then we recessed until you could come in so we could have a more forward discussion about that. I'm giving you the real short version, okay? And I won't even mention the shushing that happened before, but anyhow, it's... But there, so scenarios that the committee is, they could adopt some of those budget cutting things if they're comfortable with that. We could ask, one of the things I put, we could ask the FinCom, can you amend your budget reduction by four grand to make us whole? And we came up with 171. Can you throw us a bone for 4,000? We could, with the other position reductions that we would do in terms of hours for personnel, we really don't want to do because they affect some really good programs we have here in terms of like the remedial tutor and our enrichment tutor position, which the kids just absolutely love. Or we could go to the Tohato assessment. I think the assessment is 177 in Berlin right now. It's 43-something to...
Increase.
To Boylston, increase.
Increase, yeah.
Yeah, increase, yeah. Well, deal with the increase, deal with the banks, so don't worry about that. But the increases, I mean, obviously if we go...
I mean, coming within 4K, I mean, it's probably going to be fine. I mean, I don't think you'd need to dig for that extra 4K. So, what's your scenarios? Because, like I said, we've got some positive news of the extra 25K in new growth. I mean, so, I think we're going to be fine in that area. It's just going to be a matter of, will we be able to whittle this down? Probably. You know, you're not going to, don't expect us to be whittling it down like 50,000, but it will...
Well, 25.
Well, that's, we, we...
Started asking.
We will be going through the numbers and looking at scenarios, but I mean, that's, I mean, it's possible. So, we're not trying to, you know, please every, you know, every piece from you and say it has to be that.
But we're trying to work with you to, obviously, obviously.
And like I said, we came in with a number that we aren't going to come back to you and say, oh, by the way, you gave us 175K, well, give us another 25K unless they said something really strange happens and...
Yeah, as we started with the committee, I mean, it's, it's much, a long way to go. The only budget we have out there is the governor's budget. We haven't heard anything ways and means. We haven't, I know collections are up, revenue across the state surprisingly. I don't know if the MBTA will eat all that up or whomever. I mean, there's a lot of competition for obviously a lot of, a lot of dollars. And will we see Chapter 70 go up? I mean, once again, Berlin and Boylston get zero. In additional aid for municipal government, this year, we get zero for Chapter 70 because we're considered to be wealthy communities. I mean, as you're abundantly aware of, at the FinCom. Will that change somewhat from the state level? I don't know. Long, long way to go. I mean, something else that I didn't mention to the committee, but just came to me a minute ago, probably a revelation. But anyhow, if, if there's money left over, I know in Boylston, we've had sometimes money left over at the end of the year in the budget. I know it needs to be vetted out at town meeting and it needs to be certified as free cash and da-da-da-da. But in the past, I know that one thing is if you're talking about your four grand or whatever happens to be, or five grand or something like that, sometimes if there's been some money left over there, at the special town meeting, they've allowed the school department to apply that to X, Y, Z budget. So, I just offer that to you as a possibility for the FinCom to consider. And I didn't mention the school, may apologize, just, just thought of it.
One question, you know, you need to be thinking about in the future fiscal years, and we've been looking at the same thing. We've been trying to, you know, squeeze things down and try and get us to basically mitigation money from development of the malls. Now, when you look at fiscal year 14, I've done some, just looking at the numbers from students, I think one of the things will be, it's going to be bad, I think, overall probably for Tohato, but at least good from a Berlin assessment standpoint. I know when it comes to FY14, if you look at the two grades, elementary school grades that basically this, this year's fifth and fourth grades, that will suddenly, you know, by FY14, if you look at Boylston's fifth and fourth grades, good chance the assessments are going to swing significantly Berlin's favor where the last few years, they've been, we've been increasing, we've been gaining ownership. And a big part of that is the students go in there. And it's going to swing, which will probably be a good thing for our financial standpoint, though it's going to land on Boylston's court there. And I don't know how that's going to play out, but, you know, from EMS standpoint, they're probably going to get benefit, you know, coming in FY14 moving forward, but it's probably going to be at Tohato's...
Well, you do and you don't, too. I mean, you don't forget, you're going to lose Chapter 70 on that also.
We know we're going to lose the Chapter 7, Chapter 70, but at the same time, I mean, if you really look at those, the numbers of students, I mean, it's hard to see how that's not going to be, you know, unless there's something, a lot of people moving in town, switching around, it's going to swing almost certainly, you know, that we're, our probably assessments are going to be percentage-wise dropping by FY14. Because ours has been increasing, I think, like, I think the fourth year in a row.
I think 4.4% this year.
Yep. And that's been, been one of our biggest killers. And we've been hoping to get through that, let's say with mitigation funds and that stuff. That just doesn't, you know, we just can't quite get there. So, I don't know if you have running numbers of that for FY14, thinking about, I mean, what it looks like for Tohato?
And FY14? I'd like to settle 13 first and then...
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, obviously you've been looking, you know, considering FY14, but I mean, the student numbers, I mean, definitely don't...
Yeah, it depends upon a lot of things. We just, you know, we have historically, obviously we lose kids between the eighth and ninth grade. Volk schools is one that we lose, we lose students to. And the other one is, you know, we have students that go to private schools at that point in time. Traditionally, from my experience and from research, is when a new school is being built, we tend to have a much greater retention factor at that level. So, we may have a lot of kids coming that might decide to come back from charter schools. A lot of those kids are almost all Berlin. So, that could complicate, I would say, don't count your chickens for their hats because that could, that could contribute significantly to Berlin numbers coming into Tohato Regional High School or kids not, not receiving with the normal, the normal kids going out. Those things are all, I mean, those are just not concrete projections. I mean, you just have to get closer to that time when those, when those projections become more, more concrete. Plus the reimbursement, obviously, Chapter 70 reimbursement for regional transportation is going to go up because right now, you get nothing but all those sixth grade kids. You get nothing for those bus routes. You will get reimbursement for those regional transportation, which could be any revenue 37, 57, on that, which will be an additional revenue generating thing for, for Tohato. But in all honesty with you, I, the only time I've really, really thought about FY14 a lot is this evening when we're starting to talk about school choice in the Berlin, the Berlin Elementary School. But that is, everything you're saying is, is correct unless there's a major change afoot during the FY14 to do more regionalization on a K-12 basis. And obviously, that would change everything.
And in the school choice, I mean, what is your, what is the total funds that you have for school choice? I mean, how much are you, I mean, if you did apply another 100,000...
Me for Berlin?
Yeah, how much are you...
Yeah, we can review that for you. You have that. We, is there a school choice sheet right over there in the chair if you want to get it? I think I, can you look at this gentleman?
That's all? Oh, yeah.
We can review it with you right now if you'd like. I mean, I'll, I'll ask Ms. Keegan to review it with you. Okay?
Currently, we're projecting at the end of FY13, that's with the updated FY13 cherry sheet, 260,893. And as you can see, if you look in the middle of the page, that's after the applying with the school committee already discussed, 200,000. So, if you apply an additional 100,000 per Dr. DeBrul's recommendation to the school committee, that would bring it down to, now, you're talking about just the end of FY13, but bring it down bottom line to 16893, obviously. Now, looking forward to FY14, thinking prospectively, again, assuming applying in FY13 another 200,000, but also if the school committee were to vote the recommendations of an additional 13 slots sprinkled throughout the sixth grades, that would bring in approximately an additional $65,000 in revenue. So, the bottom line with those two factors, the additional $65,000 in revenue coming in in FY14, because the revenue comes a year after you, you apply that school choice in 13, and the 200,000 assumed applied to the budget in FY14, you would have 100 bottom line with the $50,000 contingency, 145893 approximately. So, of course, it would be 195893 with the 50,000. So, and again, as I, I know you haven't, I don't know if you have heard this or not, but we have gotten some guidance, for lack of a better word, recommendations from both DESE and Department of Revenue that school choice funds are not to be, you know, built up as, you know, it's okay to keep some reserve there, but it is there for the purpose of paying for the education of the students you have in the system for school choice. And that certainly is what has been going on, you know, in the districts. But definitely applying more, so...
Which has been going on, expanding use or it has not?
Has, has been being used. Oh, yes. Not, not much, more starting in FY12. Definitely more is being applied in FY12. But certainly, in FY13, we're recommending more to be applied in, in score. Again, according to the DOR, they're fine if you leave, say, one year's worth of revenues there for contingency, but anything beyond that, they do start to, both DESE and DOR take a look at that. So, definitely making more of an application of those funds.
And I think in FY14, it's even more critical to have that fund balance there just because of the reason you said, we're not quite sure what our projections are going to be for Tohato when that sixth grade goes up, as well as for, for Berlin Elementary, too. So, it gives us some wiggle room to play with the budget.
I had a, I had a huge concern about it, but they put my mind at ease. I was not sure what the balance had been and what you were projecting until tonight. So, any questions? Any other questions or comments or...
I mean, I did caution the committee the fact that, you know, you can always vote, vote budgets down. It's only much.
Right.
To vote them down, but once you vote them down, illegally you can vote them up, but it's not really a popular thing to do because people have, have, you know, obviously, start to account for that money in, in far as the town, town planning is concerned.
So, we have the option of voting to add an additional $100,000 of school choice money to the FY13 budget and also the option of a cut to the, one of the sixth grade teacher positions.
In transportation.
And the transportation adjustment. We vote that. Is that, we can, do we have to vote to apply that adjustment?
You just have to vote to apply to reduce the, your bottom line.
Right.
That's all, that's all you have to do. That would be...
Would it be easier to just vote the bottom line?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Well, yeah, it would. I mean, that's what's...
Yep.
We can give that, too. That would basically reflect an increase of 23,307 or, I mean, you'd have an increase at the Berlin Elementary of like 0.88 percent, of 1%. So, it wouldn't even be a 1% increase. So, most of the assessments you're talking about, the increases were all to reach. Here, it's just 23,000.
Eleven, eleven, okay. Got that here, too.
I can give you that figure if you'd like. It's...
It's really 171 reduction.
Oh, 12.
Only 171 because we're not doing...
Oh, that's right.
That's including the 171,000, just so that we're clear. It includes 100,000 in school choice, 53,000 for the...
Teacher line item.
Teacher line item and 18,000 for the sped transportation. That totals 171,000 because we only had done 171.
That's right.
Yeah. So, the new number to be voted this evening, removing that from the previously voted budget, Reducing the budget from 2,835,609, 2,835,609, reducing it by 171,000. Don't want to hear this, I didn't read this, like, 2,664,609.
Okay. Do you want to hear a motion?
I'm going to adjust the FY13 budget from 2,835,609, yes, to 2,664,609.
Okay. Second. Anything else to be said? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
That was 171. That was 171. We'll keep you posted. Like I said, we're working on numbers, but we won't be coming back in a second more. We'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
Remember, 25,000 is what you're shooting for.
Thank you. All right. Let's simplify the agenda. Should I steal yours now?
No.
Someone was in the... Jill is here, surely.
Sure.
Yeah. Jill, do you have a report that you wanted to offer up?
If you'd like to.
Sure, we can go back. We're just kind of changing gears here. So, if you have a report, that'd be great.
Very shortly. Next Tuesday, CPAC is having a presentation over to Tohato. Dr. Joseph Moldover, who's a developmental neuropsychologist from Wellesley, will be coming to talk to us about executive function, which seems to be a hot topic these days. So, that will be at 7 o'clock at Tohato next Tuesday, the 20th.
Great. Thank you. All right. We did vote on the calendar, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the French River Educational Collaborative.
Courtney, take that one.
Okay.
Yes, we do, do our oil bidding through the French River Educational Collaborative. And that was done in November. Actually, we finalized the bid November 29th, 2011, for $3.21 per gallon. And currently in the budget, I have budgeted for 23,000 gallons plus a buffer. So, we're all, we're all set there and, because luckily, we had the bids long in time before we, we had to do the budget. So, that worked out great. And they do, and what I had historically done where I was before, because I worked with French River, is we take a vote and I'm required to send a letter to them attesting to that for their files.
Okay. So, we need a motion to award the FY2013 number two heating oil bid to Peterson Oil for a fixed price of 321 per gallon pursuant to the river, the French River Educational Collaborative bid, opening held on November 29th, 2011. So, I'm... Second. Not reading that again. All right. Anything else to be said? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. You have that, don't you? Okay. All right. And we are going to talk about the intercom clock replacement system at the next meeting.
Yes, we hope so.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And next thing on the agenda is to amend the first capital article, the boiler repair.
Just if you remember way back, a long time ago, we met...
I can remember really far back now.
With the advisory to the FinCom when they asked us for, or articles for the annual town meeting. And one of the ones that we did talk about back then was the continual problem we're having with the leaky boiler block. So, we had made a recommendation back then, we did put it on a town warrant and I, and[1786.44] and I, and I believe that the chair had requested then that we just make it just to, like, an amount to be determined, because we just weren't sure, because there was a lot of discussion about it. And I, I, we had a further conversation with Mr. Baldonari, and I know Carol spoke with Joe at length about this, too. But basically, came back and said, after a further examination, we can repair this one section at a time. And Joe's apparent, Joe's opinion, and also the consultant we have came in to look at this, we're probably going to wind up repairing sections year after year after year after year. And, which is going to cost us a great deal more in labor, okay, over the years, versus doing it at one, one fell swoop, just getting it all done at once. Because according to, to Joe, and, and also to the people we had come in to look at it, the other sections are not far behind. And you replace one, that increases additional pressure on another section, and that section blows, and you're, I mean, it's just a domino theory. So, a project, the bid, we have just a bid quote price, it doesn't mean these people will get the work, but we have a price to bring in to send forward, if the school committee votes this evening to approve this, I would amend our capital planning warrant article, number one, to reflect a price of 38,365 to, to replace 15 new sections, including one new front section, 11 new plain intermediate sections, two tankless heater sections, one new rear section, and the block also with a new, a new jacket casing. I don't really know what a lot of that means, to be quite candid with you, and I'm not trying to suggest that I do. Do you? Okay, good. So, so, but that's what we're looking to do right now. Do you want to add to that?
Might be going around that to 40, because of timing.
Four, oh, yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make a recommendation that we actually round it to 40,000 because of timing. I mean, this is just one quote, it is current, but as things go forward. But as you can see, you know, it's based on the current prevailing wages, which is good, so we have that in place, and that, that's all, all aesthetic and everything. But just to, here, give us a little bit of wiggle room for time, by the time it gets voted on and getting additional bids and moving forward. So, if we did it, say, over the summertime.
Probably won't be, wouldn't be through the summertime anyhow.
Really, yeah.
Any town meeting.
Just gives a little bit of wiggle room there.
Okay. Having been to the FAC meetings, where we, I think originally, we started with 16,000. That's what they have in their capital plan. And I think as of this Tuesday, when I went to the last meeting, they have an additional $4,000, I believe, to play with. So, that would only leave 20. So, we would be asking for more than they generally earmark this for, just to let the committee know. Probably should let the finance committee know and find out whether they would approve or not approve of.
Okay.
That particular item, but you're recommending that we need to do this work, or we should do this work.
Well, we can't, without the committee voting to allow us to address this and amend the capital planning warrant article, then it's, it's, it's basically dead. I mean, even having a conversation with people. So, I mean, obviously, they control it at that point in time. If we make the recommendation, you make, we make the recommendation, you approve this, then it allows us to take this forward to the capital planning committee for their consideration. Whether they approve it or not is, that's, that's up to them at that, at that point in time, or whatever amount they would approve at that point in time.
Yeah, so that's why, just filling you in.
Oh, yeah, no, no, for sure.
And, you know, I, I think if the work needs to be done, then we, in my opinion, we should vote to, you know, send the information to the capital planning and so on and so forth.
Yeah, do they have funds in the capital planning for, usually, it's on a long term, so do they have in the year after 16,000 for this, and the year after 16,000 for this?
They target a certain amount, which is something like 400 and, I have it here, 400.
Yeah, it's a pretty big figure, yeah.
I'm hearing this.
It would reduce, I think, our needs in future fiscal years, if we just go ahead and.
Well, they try to, they try to stay with the target of 476,800, which is, I believe, back, I forget what year, 2001, I think, was the capital target at that point. And they are trying to stay level.
What Scott was saying, maybe, there may be small flexibility in the budget.
Right.
They could adjust that warrant article right up until they go to print.
Exactly.
You know, things, things change.
Yep.
It's going to cause, if we do one section, it's going to cause other sections to fail. And it's not like we're going to say, well, no, we can't do that this year, we won't have heat. Let's just do it.
Oh, we had talked about doing something, the water filtration, anybody?
We have tried to, I mean, that is just.
I think, you know, I had heard from someone else, too, that, you know what? You don't know for sure if that's really.
That's true.
The issue. So, I didn't know if there was something else you wanted to add or not.
It is problematic, it is problematic.
I think it was Whitewater was the company that we were pursuing on that, and I think Joe's been after them for almost two and a half months, which is cannot get people to make a move on that, or to commit that, indeed, the water testing they have, that that is contributing to this particular problem. So, I think the interpretation is very, very, is, is correct.
But I think by May town meeting, we will know more certainly what we need to do, right?
We know this work has to be done.
Yes.
Have you gotten the bid from the boiler installer at Tohoto? The new school?
No.
Who's open the doors?
No, no, this, this is just a ballpark, just to move this warrant article through at this point in time. But that, we'd have to go to, have to bid on this anyhow.
I know. They could bring some expertise into the water.
No, good point.
Okay, so, do I hear a motion?
I move to amend the article. Is it one?
Well, it's our number one article, I guess.
I move to amend the article pertaining to the boiler repair to reflect $40,000.
And not to exceed.
Not to exceed $40,000 to reason, hopefully.
Should we be, should we say boiler repair, boiler replacement? Or just maintenance of the boiler?
Is it replacement, total replacement?
I don't think it says replace with the boiler, it's just, it's just all the, all the sections, see?
So, stick with.
Complete boiler block, that's what it'd be.
Replacing.
Replacing a complete boiler block on one of your V115 Berlin, Birmingham boilers. So, it's not the boiler, it is the, indeed, a boiler block.
Okay.
We're looking at. Nobody wants us to say.
Yeah, if you read the verbiage going on, and they keep referring back to the block, the block, the block, so, you know.
So, I want to amend the amendment to reflect boiler block.
To reflect boiler block, not to exceed 40,000.
Correct.
So, your motion is to amend the article pertaining to the boiler replacement. Boiler repair. Boiler repair, I'm sorry, repair, to reflect replacement of a complete boiler block, not exceed 40,000.
Yes, I was, yeah, very nice job, Eileen.
Would you like to make the motion, Eileen? No, we're just making the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, anything else to be said? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. We'll see where we go from here. I think we've covered the budget discussion, if I'm.
Yes.
Not mistaken. School choice discussion.
Well, I won't repeat everything, we, some of the things we already talked about, school choice, but I would like Carol just to speak for a minute on the recommended school choice slots that we have, we're looking at for 2012, total of 13, but I'd just like you to give a little bit more background on some of the package deals that we were mentioning, so to speak, some of the dynamics involved in this.
So, you can see, second column, the announced requests we've gotten thus far this year for the number of school choice students, so they're 24, they're really, as Mike said before, they're 10 requests for kindergarten. We whittled this down to the columns over on the right, and I'll just go through each of those grade levels, explain the line. In kindergarten, we're asking for one now, because it's a sibling of a brother going into third grade who's already a school choice in our school.
Okay.
In first grade, we have a sibling of a child who's in our school for special education services. They're twins. So, the one, both boys are with us at this time. One of, one of the children's going potentially back to boil, or is going back to boiling. So, that child will probably come in as a school choice to be with the siblings here, twins of living services. I think there's a tall ready. I know, I'm trying to, you know, do more.
I don't want to know the details either, I'm just trying to get clear in my head. So, there's a student who's here in third grade?
Tuitioned in, paid by Boston.
Okay.
That's.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
There's no cost of growing.
Right, and, I mean, it is a good idea to keep the families together, in my opinion. Okay. You want to go on?
Sure. In the second grade, we have one student who already has. We have one set of twins, of that four, that also has a sibling going into grade. We have a sibling who's going to grade four, so that's one of those. So, they're a package deal. And then we have another package deal, which would be a sibling in grade two, and then a sibling in grade four. And then the third, fourth, the third grader would be a sibling of a child who's already there going into fifth grade. So, that's where you get them in the third.
So, to make, maybe to make this easier, taking for granted that we were going to accept all the package deals.
Yes, package deals.
Are there additional numbers here to separate out in your, is it the, I guess it would be the recommended school choice column? Those are the ones that are, those are the ones that you're requesting?
Yes.
Okay, so, is that all there is, is just the package deals? There's no, no plain old students that just want to come? What's in the water?
There's a special this week on package deals.
Okay. Do you understand my question?
That they weren't connected to anybody else.
Right.
Right.
Singing, it's like scheduling at the high school called Singletary.
We sort of reduce those.
Yes.
As package deals.
Are all of the 13 students that you're requesting, are they all to do with the package deals?
They're all attached.
Okay, there we go, that's, that's what I was looking for.
And we're sensitive to the fact that the whole school choice has crept up over the years, and that's why this year, we, even though we have 24 requests with school choice, we're only really looking at 13 students.
Okay, which 13 would be added to the 25, am I correct? Which is the present number of school choice?
That is correct.
Okay, wow. And it, and should these package deals not be accepted, how would a lottery work, or would it?
We would have to.
I'm sorry.
Like for kindergarten, for example, we would have to do a lottery.
But you're not requesting except for the one?
Except for that one, that already has a sibling here.
Siblings do not participate in the lottery. They have a student here, and an opening comes in, they're automatically in, they don't participate in any random draws, that's the statute.
Okay. I mean, we have tried to do that, I didn't think the statute was like that, but I, we have tried to do that, and we have not strayed from that.
Yeah, that's the law. They get, they get first priority in any open slots if they have a sibling here.
Okay.
But if there is not a new slot available, we don't have to, we don't take in anybody.
Right, that's what I was trying to say.
That's correct.
Okay.
They have the rights to attend, just the students that are here have a right to attend.
Okay. Any comments, questions? I know we, the philosophy's been to keep a real handle on it.
But the popu, total population of the school has decreased. I think when, or at least when my kids were there, it was like a 220, 2, 230. So, now, we're down to, with school choice, we're down to 194.
That number also doesn't include the pre, preschool, but it is alone.
I don't think there was a preschool when my kids were there.
There was Bell, Bell preschool.
Right.
But I don't know if we ever really put it in the numbers.
I think it's a big jump.
Well, looking for some guidance from the committee, how you feel about it, what you'd like to do?
I mean, if it's something you want to think about, I mean, you could wait till April. I mean, we can go beyond April, because then we need to have that draw for those students who, if we need to have a draw, you know, before June 1. So, we would have, you know, some more time, but I mean, but you'd really need to, because people want to know.
Right. So, what's the thought on the, from the committee?
We're still keeping our class sizes really small. I mean, I don't know.
Right. 13 kids.
I know, it's like amazing.
I think maybe as the enrollment of the Berlin residents go up, you don't have to know what, is that number somewhere that we have here tonight? Last year's Berlin resident number? Is it, is it going up at all, or is it staying the same, is?
I mean, who's the projected K-class?
Just the enrollment of the Berlin residents at Berlin Memorial. Right now, it's one, well, next year, it's projected to be 169?
Correct.
I'm just curious whether that's gone up, down, or?
This would be, right?
Wait, we have that information here.
I have this here.
You have that in your, we have that tonight.
Oh, it's. No, 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 this is, this I just had, I put it in all my calendars.
No, I didn't, I think they have that tonight, yeah, when I gave them the.
Wait a minute, I don't have that.
Yeah, we have that tonight.
Oh, they updated when she just did. Yeah, yeah. I thought she wanted to know it down, but.
Yeah, it's what it is.
It's gone down.
It's October 1, 2011.
It's gone down, it was 178, it's 178. It always has a June.
This year. Oh, you've got that, too.
That was last year.
This probably does need to include also.
That's what I have, too.
Kids that maybe your hearing may be leaving in whatever grade, and so on and so forth, either. I'm assuming, Carol, you know, you. This does not include, you're not guessing, you know, so many kids might be leaving in, like, fifth grade, or anything.
Fifth to sixth, I mean, or just fifth grade?
Like fourth grade, you, you're not taking any of that into account, you're assuming they're going to be there.
Yes, for sure.
Okay.
Unless we know for certain.
So, this is really, it is a low number for, 194 is the projected total with school choice right now, correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
Not counting, not counting the 13 students.
Not counting the 13.
Correct. That would be. Recommended.
Mm-hmm, so it would be 194 plus 13.
194 is your population of students next year, as things currently exist without any more school choice kids coming in.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you compare that to this. Right?
What are you comparing it to?
It's 202. Well, if you take this year's students from Berlin, plus the school choice, there's 202, compared to 194. So, our popu, if, our population is going down slightly by eight, just naturally. So, you're increasing it by 13, but if you kind of like take the eight out of that, it's like five. It's still really small.
It is, my only, I think we're getting, one thing that I really valued, my son was in school here, was a small classroom, you don't want them too small, obviously, but you don't want them too big. And my, I mean, I think we're all in reasonable, very reasonable terms here. The fourth grade, I start to get worried, I'm not completely worried yet, but if there was, I mean, getting up to 18 kids in a classroom, and then, I know it's acceptable under most guidelines, but still, that's something that I really valued.
Do you know, being that we all feed this? Do you know, being that we all feed this, we feed this all into Tohoto, what school choice at Boilston looks like at this point in time?
In terms of their num, in terms of their numbers?
Yeah, in terms of how many they're accepting or their enrollment, because we feed all the students. If these students choose to stay all the way through to 12th grade, Tohoto will only win all the way through.
What's the school choice in Tohoto right now, the entire school, I believe it's 24, if I remember correctly. But of course, it's a much bigger
Correct.
student population base, you know?
Correct.
But I think that's their, their total.
Yes, choice.
Gee, you know, I forgot, we voted last week, hit the commitment because of the three budgets, I mean.
Right, right, I understand.
They did vote to accept more, more students, but I wouldn't say a landslide or anything of that type of thing. As a matter of fact, I take it back.
Kindergarten, like second grade.
They had 12 students on that school choice.
Yeah.
Because it was 24, it was at one point in time, over the years it went down to 12. So I think, if I remember correctly, and, you know, once again, I hate to say that was maybe wrong, but I think they might be looking maybe at another eight or a dozen, I mean.
55 plus.
11, something like that. But they had 24, over the years it went down to 12, now they're looking to change that.
I don't remember the national, but their overall class size is, still, they're not as low as here, but they're, they're, most of them are less than 20. If they have one grade that's a 20, with school choice recommendations, that would be a lot, so I think that's a partial answer to your question.
Okay, thank you.
Krista.
Hi there.
Hi there. Given the census data, is there any surprises coming in population to Berlin or Boilston or anything like that?
Unless you put a sewer line through.
I mean, is there, is there?
I mean, really, I mean, if you did, those towns would explode, but I'm sure that we just, the location is everything, and a great location, but no. We see at Boilston a just flat, flat line, or even a decrease in student numbers from what we can see as far as the town census is concerned. I don't know what the town census here demonstrates, I haven't seen this one.
The overall preschool numbers, just for next year, are down in both towns.
How much, how much can we look at here, out in five years? What's the projected decrease?
Percentage wise, I don't know. Yeah, she goes out.
Okay. So what's your pleasure?
Think about it another month.
Go ahead and make a motion.
This is your recommendation, right, Carol? I mean, you're comfortable with it? Like I said, you know, we're the expert, and you're in the building, so I would.
She wants to take them all, but I won't let her.
Thanks for saying that. Don't mind, just said that.
Thought I'd get it right out.
Then she doesn't have to say that. We're, we're very conservative, knowing that we're all very conservative, I guess.
And I do understand, it's a struggle between the educator and the business person.
I mean, it has ramifications for the future, I think, I don't think there's any question about it. I mean, particularly just the numbers, and as, if you're planning that numbers are going to remain flat on students coming in, or they're actually going to show a decrease, then, as I said to the faculty, you know, this week, it's, that's going to be problematic.
One of the things, one of the things, as I'm thinking about this, is that if they're all sort of package deals, then.
Well, this year's unusual, because we have, we have twins, and we have, yeah, this is an unusual, very unusual year.
Right, but I mean, you're already, the ones you're accepting already have family members at the school, then the chances are less likely that maybe there are younger kids to come. I'm just trying to think positively, but that, you know, that is, you really can't base it on that, so, okay.
It's, it's up to you, I mean, you could, you could send a vote in from the committee that we're not going to open up school choice next year. It would be zero, you know?
I don't think, but the numbers, that doesn't really make sense.
I wouldn't recommend you do that, because I always like to have you to keep your, your options open. I mean, you can always change those numbers as you go along, too.
Is your, numbers you're not comfortable with, comfortable with?
As I said, I was a little uncomfortable with the total that was going to end up in fourth grade, but, I mean, I think one in kindergarten, one in first grade, certainly. It's just when we get, start getting into the big numbers and really increasing the class size.
You know, and you hate to say it, but you, it's nice that there's at least, most of the children in the classroom are from Berlin. You know? It's true.
Yeah.
Just a little, one a little thing here.
Two families.
The other thing, too, with some of that, we're just, not just, the thought just crossed my mind, that for some of these students here, if we don't take their siblings in this year, then parents may just pull them, so they all go to the same school together.
Right.
That's two or three, you said, Carol?
I think it's all of them.
Yeah, she said they're all a package deal.
She said it was all of them.
If they feel, yeah.
What package leaves?
Package deal.
At this point, two or three students.
Right, good, because you, because you have twins here, so that complicates things.
Yep. So my feeling is just that it, I guess I would go with the recommendation of the 13 school choice students for next year.
I would go with it, but I think that we need to be really cautious in the future when looking at school choice and the numbers, and how many kids we're accepting.
I agree. So do I hear a motion to the effect of accepting the recommendation of 13 as presented by the administration for school choice for next year in the slots?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Public school committee comments. All righty. Hearing done. Future agenda items.
May just want to put the budget, FY13 budget on, just in case something else comes up, you know, in April, because that would probably be your last opportunity to do anything with the budget prior to Maytown meeting, just to have it as a, as a place card.
Okay.
If you want to have a discussion on it.
We had a couple things we mentioned, didn't we?
Oh, the intercom system?
Yep.
The financial, was it?
Audit management letter.
Audit management letter.
Yep.
Can we ask for an update on the water situation?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah. Yeah, because I had made a note, so I didn't know if, yeah.
Yeah, water quality, yeah.
I don't know if we'll need that.
Yeah, no, we just sign it.
I'll ask, I'll find out from Ruth if there's something, when you go through the packet, if there's anything. Okay. Or you can let me know. Okay. That sounds like it's about it. Okay. Do we have need for an executive session?
No, we do not.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye.